Well, everything looks good and sounds good over here, so I think we're gonna be all right. Hey Jerry, you might check the sound just to make sure that you're good.
Oh, no.
No, it's sounding fine here, but you just might wanna double check it.
Okay.
While we still have time to... While we still have time to fix it before the meeting.
Okay.
I think we found it. But we couldn't figure out why it was causing the problem. Because the same gear that caused the problem here, I mean, you can think of that without issue. But we couldn't figure out why it was causing the problem. Because the same gear that caused the problem here, I mean, you can think of that without issue. So, we couldn't figure out why it was causing the problem. Because the same gear that caused the problem here, I mean, you can think of that without issue. So...
Because counsel is having a hard time remembering.
Hey Chief. How are you? Doing good.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, test, 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 test. Four, test one.
I have some buttons on it and it just popped in there back. Like, I'm guessing I saw the other week. I thought it was... Oh, that's a player. Oh, and you have... Oh, that's... I forgot the gear.
But I can't do that. One... What is it? Because I was... I was trying to... I don't know, I stopped. Yeah, actually. But... Yep. It depends on sound. So, you're... So, there's your... Something else may...
Hi, Ian, this is Melissa. And I'm... Uh, no, I didn't know that's today. Uh, I... No, I remember. But yeah, I can't... Anyway, I... Yeah, I... No, I ordered a vegetarian. I have someone that's vegetarian, so I ordered... It was the one with the mustard. Okay. I don't know. I don't know what's called this. Someone at vegetarian. Yeah. For the first one. Yeah. I'm pretty sure that's what I ordered, is sort of mac and cheese. I have one vegetarian, we always order vegetarian medium for this. That's still... Thank you. I don't know, I didn't actually speak to her about that, Justin, so... I'm thinking that we're probably gonna call her, because I don't know that she has... They're gonna bring one more pizza? I'll be looking for it, but if you don't mind watching, it's interesting. They forgot our vegetarian. Forgot our vegetarian.
I think they're gonna come on back.
Yeah. But he said it'd be back. An extension, or I don't know that we have any other extension. Yeah, I don't know that we have any other ones.
Hello? Hey, Dad.
So, if you might want to, you can use... And we'll have some... And if you have a question, and I think, for that, if you want to go through, because they want on the part of the...
Okay, well, just remember, if you... You drop it off, you're by very bad.
Okay. We'll be just a few minutes, and we need to wait for our quorum to be with us before we start our meeting. So, welcome, everyone. It's good to have a whole house. The dialogue this evening. Well, welcome, everyone, this evening to our specially called Senate Council meeting.
This is Wednesday, February 21st, 2018, and it's 5:35. I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll remind those that are frequent visitors here that we've moved the flag to the right side instead of the left side, so...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have... We have, uh, on the phone tonight, we have Council President Manke, who's calling in, uh, who was not able to be with us this evening. And so we now have a quorum. Let me share with you this evening, uh, we have two items of business that are, we're going to be going over. Number one, a discussion on RV parking and vehicular camping, uh, and then a discussion on our park ordinances and relating to large events. We expect to go into executive session at the conclusion of this meeting also. This evening, we're going to be a little different in that this is really a work session for the council. And we're not going to open comments, so this is going to be presentations of facts from staff to the council. And you'll be able to listen to our dialogue and our discussion in a direction that, uh, we will, um, share with our staff to take. Again, our first is on our RV and vehicular camping. And just in brief, uh, this is our first report to the council regarding, uh, RV, uh, vehicles, campers, and vehicles camping that has affected our city and citizens for a couple of years now. Again, what we're looking at doing tonight is revisiting our current ordinances as it deals with abandoned vehicles and RV and car camping. The last update, if I'm not mistaken, was in nineteen sixty, which puts that about fifty-eight years ago. I look in the crowd and, you know, we were pretty young then, and lots of changes has happened. So, uh, we have had an opportunity, um, through Chief, uh, Matt has really done a, an excellent job of, of doing some, uh, research and bringing some data to us this evening that I think will help us, uh, understand where and what we need to do. So with that being said, uh, Chief, I'm gonna, and Tim, are you gonna be a part, if, uh, the Chief and, and Tim will come up and address the council. And Kelly, we'll move the phone over to you so that it may be, you'll be able to hear.
Can everybody hear me okay? Alrighty, thank you. Kelly, can you hear me okay, Councilor Manke? Council?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, so, uh, Mayor, members of the City Council, uh, city staff, and obviously, we have a fairly full, um, attendance tonight at the, uh, at this work session. As, uh, the mayor pointed out, um, this is the first report, uh, that we're going to provide to the City Council regarding RVs, recreational vehicle campers and vehicle camping that's been affecting our city, uh, for the last number of years now. I know Captain Simons, who's in charge of our code enforcement, is going to be presenting the PowerPoint that's probably ten slides long. And I know we're gonna have, uh, some discussion, uh, after that, some question and answers. But, uh, I did kinda wanna summarize, uh, what we've gone through and, uh, where we're at right now. So, uh, with that being said, information contained in this work session will include examples of some codes from other Oregon cities that have provided avenues to address current vehicular camping concerns, uh, that our cities also struggled with. Uh, in addition, the report's going to discuss, uh, as you saw in the staff report, uh, city costs in addressing these situations. And to provide you with some context to how frequently the police department, uh, specifically our code enforcement and police officers deal with these types of calls for service and provide you information about what, uh, why city, current city code language makes it extremely difficult to act in a timely manner on these types of complaints. So, um, over the last number of months, uh, McMinnville PD, uh, in the city has dealt with a growing issue in regards to people living, camping in their RVs, campers, trailers, and vehicles. Uh, this is occurring in city streets, public right of ways, and public owned properties such as surface parking lots and parking structures. Uh, these situations have caused a significant increase in calls for service to the police department. Throughout the, uh, city, it, and it really hasn't, it's affected everywhere from residential to industrial, uh, or commercial zones. Uh, the police department has been called to deal with these, uh, types of situations. During recent city council sessions, uh, there have been numerous, uh, city, cities, uh, citizens voicing concerns that the inaction by the city has impacted the livability in their neighborhoods or their businesses. The citizens have voiced concerns that, uh, there are people, uh, sleeping in these vehicles are causing safety issues with loose dogs running around, littering, uh, public urination and defecation, or in general, just, uh, overall, general, uh, public health issues. I think it's also worth noting, uh, that, uh, these complaints, uh, are not all inclusive. There are, uh, some that camp out of their vehicles that, uh, will, in general, you know, be good citizens or neighbors. That being said, uh, the issues being dealt with, uh, that the citizens have voiced concerns about are real. Um, it's the police department's belief that proposals made to the council tonight regarding ordinance language will be done in a thorough and thoughtful manner. In additions or changes to existing McMinnville code will be recommended based on the direction of the city council and how you wish to proceed, uh, with the information that we're gonna provide tonight. So, with that being said, Captain Simons, who again is in charge of our code section, uh, will sort of walk you through, um, his PowerPoint, which discusses some of the, the staff report I put together.
Thank you, Chief Scales. Can you hear me okay? Uh, just, instead of really reading off of the PowerPoint, uh, I'll try to just kind of hit on a couple of the, um, specific issues that are addressed in the slides. As has been already, uh, enumerated by Chief Scales, the, uh, there's an increased issue with surrounding recreational vehicle camper, travel trailer, and vehicle camping within the city limits. I was able to pull numbers, uh, from our, our partner, uh, YCOM, as far as the dispatch center with regards to how many, uh, abandoned vehicles, quote unquote, abandoned vehicle complaints that the city police department had, uh, responded to from January first, two thousand and seventeen, through February eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the reason that, uh, I chose the abandoned vehicles is because generally, uh, when the, when the, when these types of calls would come in, uh, they would, uh, be coded, they could be coded in three different ways: city ordinance violations, abandoned vehicles, or parking complaints. Um, with the abandoned vehicles, I was able to parse out some information specific to locations that I knew, uh, were centric to, uh, RV or camper camping issues recently. Uh, during that timeframe, I was able to parse out thirteen, as thirteen calls for service with Rita, that were in relation to the RV camper or camping complaints. Uh, it should be noted that on, on these, uh, complaints, it's not generally a singular event or a singular, uh, camper that's being, um, addressed. There are multiple campers or camping issues that are being addressed at every call. Um, so when you see a singular call, that doesn't, that does not necessarily include, or encompass all the vehicles that are present during, during the call. With that, uh, with that issue that I found as far as being able to really parse out the information and, and provide specific, good, real data for the council to, uh, look at and weigh when dealing with, uh, the current ordinances as they're, as they're constructed, I asked YCOM to come up with a, a completely new and, and different way to track those specific calls by, uh, utilizing the, the code RVORD. And I was able to pull some information this morning from two thousand, or from, uh, February eighth of this year, when it was created, to the twentieth of this month, uh, there were thirteen calls for service. So that just kinda gives you an idea that it's, it's more than what was encompassed in the abandoned vehicles, um, calls for service. But at the same time, I, I can't really give you more specific data than what is, is included in there with regards to how many calls for service. Now, since we now have that new code, there's a possibility that we'll be able to capture more real data. But since we have the new code, we also will be capturing more data than we probably would have been beforehand, so. And again, uh, most of these camping related calls involve multiple vehicles. Uh, as you can see from the pictures here, these are pictures that were taken either by department staff or local residents and provided to the, to the police department, uh, with regards to the vehicles in question that we respond to on a regular basis. These, uh, specific vehicles on this slide are in, in the Dustin Court industrial area, uh, off of Riverside Drive. Uh, here's some other vehicles, uh, that currently are up on Doran Drive. They're actually, I was up there this afternoon, uh, marking the tires, and there are actually more vehicles now, uh, in this location, that, uh, than, than are pictured here, um, to provide you some context as to kind of what, what is being dealt with. Uh, as Chief Scales said, uh, there are growing concerns by the citizens, but that are, um, certainly not limited to the loose dogs, the human and animal waste, the urinating and defecating in public, the general health and welfare and, and livability of the area. The, the picture on the left-hand side of this, of the slide, um, was, was sent in by a, a local resident. I can only imagine that is, um, bottle of waste, bodily waste that was, um, left in a, in a couple of, uh, containers in the same area, uh, that obviously families, uh, live and walk past on a daily basis. The, uh, the current city ordinance that we have to deal with, with regards to trailer houses, um, in my opinion, is ineffective in the way that it's, it's written in the, in the, in the fact that, um, you have to have four consecutive hours of living in the trailer house to be able to classify it as a trailer house and then become in violation of the city ordinance. Uh, we don't have the staff, and we don't have the time to allot to having a, a specific code enforcement officer standing there for four hours verifying that a person is living in or out of that vehicle to be able to enforce this. And the reason that we have the issue with taking it to court, uh, and being able to provide, um, documentation to show that, within the last year and a half, there was, uh, an attempt to enforce this specific ordinance and, in the McMinnville Municipal Court. And there was a judgment rendered that we weren't able, we, the police department, weren't able to verify that the person was living within that for the four consecutive hours, that thus, the application was ineffective or unable to be, uh, held, held, uh, that they were in violation of the ordinance. Since the trailer house code is, uh, seems to be ineffective, uh, we, uh, we utilize the abandoned vehicle code, which is also, uh, old and, and, uh, ineffective, and there are a lot of loopholes within it. Um, there have to be, it has to be a seventy-two hour, uh, window before it becomes identified as a, as a, uh, as an abandoned vehicle. Then there has to be a hundred and forty-four consecutive hours of the vehicle not moving before it can be towed. Um, in that timeframe, if the vehicle moves at least three hundred feet, it then starts the clock all over again and basically just moves the problem from one location to another location, um, which, again, becomes, uh, difficult and time-consuming, uh, for staff to be able to adequately and effectively address these issues as they come up. So the questions that, uh, I was asking myself with regards to, uh, the existing code and what it would, uh, what would happen if, uh, the existing code was, uh, updated, and what would it accomplish? My hope is that the code enforcement personnel to provide more effective and efficient service to the citizens. Uh, rework the codes, reworking the codes will also allow for a clear, um, procedures for those, all, all those involved, uh, and then a better understanding for the involved of what they can expect and what options they may have. Uh, contained in this ma- uh, matrix are, uh, some, uh, locations within the, this, um, the state of Oregon that I was able to pull. Their, uh, current, either abandoned vehicle and/or RV camper camping vehicle ordinances. Uh, as you can see, uh, each one of them address it, uh, in, in one way or another. Some, uh, allow for permits, some don't allow for permits, some, uh, have a real restrictive, uh, amount of hours before it becomes, uh, identified as an abandoned vehicle, or, uh, whether or not a camper, RV camper, trailer can be even parked on the street or where they may be located at. Um, these are just, this is just a snippet of how these various jurisdictions are addressing the issues that have been presented to them, uh, with regards to these specific issues. And, uh, of the agencies that I contacted, all of them are looking for voluntary compliance regardless of how their city ordinance is, is crafted. Uh, they have all, they, from the information I was able to gather, all of them have, uh, have, uh, received voluntary compliance. Uh, those that haven't received voluntary compliance, basically, they continue to put tickets on them, uh, knowing that more likely than not, they're probably not gonna get paid, and they haven't taken the steps to abate them by towing them from the, from the location for one reason or other or another, whether it's because their, um, their, their code doesn't allow for it or their, um, administration doesn't want to, uh, go down that road at this point yet. Specific to RVs and campers, not to abandoned vehicles. So the, the, again, the questions that I have, uh, with regards to rewording these ordinances, is hopefully you'll be able to give us and give me some direction with regards to what you are looking for, uh, specific to, uh, these ordinances and how they're gonna be addressed, how they're gonna, what kind of wording you would like to see in, involved in them. Uh, and then what, uh, what takes place, uh, if there isn't voluntary compliance? What the course of action will be based on the actions of the, uh, involved parties? And then, uh, I, I think that we need to really also look at what kind of an impact this may have with the McMinnville Municipal Court, because in the event that we have any violations, all of those will be heard within the court system itself.
Okay, okay. Um, I, I'd like to note, uh, one of the questions we always ask is what's the, what's the, uh, impact to staff? Uh, and candidly, uh, there will, there really will not be a, a, a major impact on city workload. In fact, I think if, if we do, if the council so chooses to streamline these ordinances and make them a little, uh, uh, obviously a little clearer, uh, we're probably going to save time in that we're not going to be dealing, uh, with a hundred and forty-four hours after seventy-two hours and continually having to monitor these situations. So, uh, our calls are already there, uh, and it's just in how efficient and how we're able to effectively deal with, with these types of complaints. So, uh, workload impact is negligible. If not, I would imagine, uh, there'd be a little bit more time for our, our code enforcement team. So, with that being said, uh, discussion, I guess, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, uh, gentlemen. Uh, again, uh, I just wanted to let those in the audience know that this report from the police department to the council is available online, and you can go under council and go under agenda and, and download the packet that would include all of the details that have been presented to us tonight and a part of that presentation. So, you can go home and take a look at that. Um, two things before I open the discussion this evening, and just kind of reading, uh, from the information that's been provided to us. Uh, the first thing is, um, from the police department, it, it is our recommendation that the code will need to be updated to current best practice standards to provide enforcement tools for staff. Specifically definitions contained in the current ordinances, ordinance needs to be updated as well as any restrictions, exemptions, timeframes, and, uh, what action is to be taken if there isn't voluntary compliance. So that's one of the charges that we have this evening. Secondarily, at the end of their presentation, the recommendation is, uh, staff recommends that the city take a thoughtful, comprehensive, uh, review of vehicular camping codes and abandoned, um, vehicle codes from other jurisdictions. Once this review is completed, the police department and the city attorney's office will need direction on how best to, um, proceed in drafting an updated ordinance for possible council consideration. And so, uh, that is what we're charged with this evening, is, uh, learning and then having discussion and then using our best ability to come up with an ordinance that, um, will allow the city to be more effective in, in taking care of the issues that have been before us. And so with that being said, um, let's just open it up to discussion to the council. Again, we have representatives, the chief and captain in front of us that we can ask questions of. I think of particular interest to me was the chart, looking at the various cities. I, I love the broad spectrum of cities that were somewhat the same size as us outside of the, outside of the Willamette Valley, and then looking at some of the cities within the Willamette Valley that are close to us so that we can see how they're dealing with. the Willamette Valley that are close to us so that we can see how they're dealing with, with the ordinance, Newburgh particularly. I know Lincoln City is vacation travelers Mecca, but again, just to even see what they've done. So I appreciate those, those charts that give us some, some comparisons. So I'll just open it up. Anyone like to start? Alan?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Bring.
There we go. Chief Scales and Captain Simons, could you give me a definition of voluntary compliance? In other words, is it someone is not in compliance and you go by and you recommend that they move their vehicle and they do so?
That's correct. It'd be somebody being educated about the law, ordinance, what have you, and them voluntary complying, moving their vehicle or whatever in accordance with the ordinance, yes.
Okay. So would that be a low percentage that did not do it voluntarily, that there was, receive a citation? And I think, Captain Simons, you were saying that the citations don't really mean much, they give those and they're basically...
For the other jurisdictions or for our...
For the other jurisdictions, sorry.
Well, the other jurisdictions, I guess, weigh the option of continuing to issue citations, knowing, based on their experience with, with that specific issue, with that specific person probably, as to whether or not continuing to issue citations is going to be effective or if it's just going to, basically, you're going to be stacking them on top of someone's windshield until the windshield wiper falls off. I don't, so as far as voluntary compliance, the hope is that everyone would voluntarily comply with whatever the orders are, within whatever timeframe they have to do that, and that if they don't, then they, then there's some, some ability for those who are enforcing that rule or regulation to have some sort of enforcement action.
Good, I think that answers it. Thank you.
Other questions, discussions?
Yeah. Hi, thanks for the presentation. It was really well done, and I appreciated all the information from other communities. You mentioned in your report about the need to have a place for the, to be thinking about where those RVs go. Did you talk to any other communities about how they address that aspect of the problem? If you're moving RVs, where do they go then?
The ones that I spoke with, specifically those, they did not have a plan with regards to where they would go. They just hoped that they were not, they would no longer be in their jurisdiction. Kind of the water displacement, you push down and it's going to go, it has to go somewhere. Just where that's going to go is anyone's guess at this point. But no, they had not specifically addressed that by identifying a location where some, someone could, could effectively park for a period of time.
And they, they didn't say that it just moved the problem to other areas of town or like there were...
Well, some of them had to, were kind of chasing them around essentially, for lack of a better term. And they were, they were also in the process of rewriting their ordinances, but they just hadn't have any specifics to be able to provide me with regards to how they were going to really address that. I think Washington counties is probably the most specific as to where you, you have to move it within a two-mile radius. If you can't be within that two-mile radius within that, after that 48 hours, if you're, if you've been found to be initially in violation, you have to move outside of that two-mile radius. Obviously, Washington County's a large county, it's, and we're not talking about the city limits, so...
Right. And one ordinance did say escalated if they had to ticket the same vehicle.
Correct.
Fines escalated. Okay. And then for voluntary compliance again, so most of them, they have had success getting voluntary compliance, but for the ones they didn't, that's when you talk about the ticketing.
Right.
So there's something that we could look at with regards to what is effective if we don't get voluntary compliance.
Yeah, the, the only jurisdiction I was able to speak with that hadn't had voluntary compliance was Oregon City, and that was a few years ago. So it was difficult for them to really pull out specifics as to what took place. They remembered towing some, an RV or a camper, but they couldn't provide me with any specifics as to how it happened, whether or not they had to force anyone out of the RV or camper, or if it was unoccupied when they, when they towed it, other than just the overall, general, we had to tow it, and that was it, so.
All right. And none that you know of have been challenged in court, like you've had the experience where with the trailer, the...
Correct.
So we don't know.
To my knowledge, none of the ones that were addressed in the, in the matrix have had a challenge in court that has not been upheld by, by the court as far as the ordinance, the way that it was crafted then.
Okay, great, thank you.
Again, our ordinance is so archaic that I think it's, I mean, in 1960, I don't believe that our forefathers thought of the, of the, of 2018 and where people are at. I would also like to, there are numerous RV locations in the county and even within the city that have slots available. In fact, I was talking to the planning director earlier today that I know three-mile lane is, does have spaces open, so there are places to go and park.
So potentially, you could be helping give them information about different places that you could go that are legal.
Yes.
And what the costs are of that.
We would be happy to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any, any questions of the chief or captain?
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation and for the thoughtful approach you've taken to... Can you guys hear me? Sorry. Thanks for the, thanks for the information and for the thoughtful approach you've taken to trying to address this issue. Do you have a sense of how big the permanent resident population of folks who are overnight camping in McMinnville is? I mean, I know we've done some surveys, but is there, how many people are we really talking about?
I don't have any direct numbers to be able to provide you at this point. That is something that we could, we could, we could obviously look at, trying to figure that out, though.
Well, I mean, I understand the problem on Doran Drive, and I understand that there's issues on Riverside Drive. I just want to kind of get a sense for what the scale is. And the reason why I'm asking is that you described other communities attempting enforcement action, and it sounds like what you're describing is, you know, people are moving maybe three miles away, but they're still essentially in violation of the ordinance that we create. I'm trying to wonder, I'm trying to figure out if there's a way that we can kind of stop that whack-a-mole process from happening.
And, okay, go, I'm sorry.
No, please.
You know, just from the, off the top of my head, from the photos that I see, I'm betting we're dealing with a population under 40 or 50, I would, I would surmise, just based on the, on the numbers. And again, they mainly congregate in those two locations. You'll get some downtown, some people that are living out of a truck or something to that effect, but the concentration, I would be willing to bet, those high-density types are 40 to 50, I would imagine.
Okay.
That'd be persons, not vehicles.
Right. Oh, thank you, Chief. With regard to some of the statutes that you referenced, there's a big range in fines. You said that the fines are really not recoverable anyway, but some of them are pretty punitive, some of them are a little bit less punitive. What's the basis for the, you know, do you get a sense why cities have such a big range in terms of...
I really don't know. And that wasn't a question that I asked as far as why they identified a specific dollar amount on each violation. It is, it's something I can, I can go back and, and ask. It's just whether or not I can get to the right person as to how they identified that specific number, or if it's just that, that's a classification that they have for that specific violation, which then defaults to that specific number.
Got it, okay. Okay. You gave us a list in the packet of, I don't know, 15, maybe it's fewer, but several city ordinances, and I have some questions about a couple of them, if that's okay.
Sure.
So Albany's one of the ones that has a really high fine associated with it, 2,500 bucks. But they also have permitted camping in certain locations for up to 90 days with approval from the city and adjacent neighbors to alleviate a temporary housing hardship. And I guess my question is that we had testimony last week from Councilor Drapkin about their ideas for a car camping program, and that sounds a little bit like Albany's attempt, but maybe a little bit less monitored by the city. Do you have any information about what they're doing with that?
I don't. In fact, Albany was the one, the one jurisdiction I wasn't able to speak with anyone prior to this report. I am still trying to contact other jurisdictions to find out how they're addressing these issues. But my initial reading of, of that specific ordinance and that, the way that you just described it makes sense. My initial thought on that 90 days was more along the lines of, I got displaced from my house because it, I need to do some sort of construction on it, and I need to live in my RV in front of my house type of a, a thing, and I need to get a 90-day rider for it. But the way that you just described it, it also kind of does make sense.
Okay.
So I can, I can get in contact with Albany to find out if there is a difference and, and why there is a difference if there, excuse me, if there is one.
Out of the questions that I asked, that's the one that I'm kind of most interested in, the follow-up on. I will have other questions related to some of these ordinances, but one that I would like to ask just for the public purpose, you're asking for direction from us with regard to some pretty complicated and sensitive policies. Do you have any recommendations based on what you've seen for us with regard to ordinances that you think are particularly well-crafted, that you've reviewed?
Of the, of the ones that I've reviewed and put on the list, I think that the ones that specifically address the issues that we're talking about today, and then provide some sort of a permitting aspect, so it allows for a homeowner or someone to have the ability to continue to have their, their RV or their camper on the roadway in front of their house makes sense. Because I think that the main issue at, at hand right now is not necessarily the people who live in the area trying to load up their camper or RV or trailer, it's just the people who don't live in the area that are parking in front of someone's house. And, and those would specifically address that issue and allow for someone who was, again, trying to load up their camper or their trailer to go on a weekend trip, or wanted to have it on the, on the street in front of their house to provide, to be able to do some sort of maintenance on it, would provide them with an out to be able to, to do that and not be in violation, but also notify the city that I don't intend to have this here for the duration of forever, or until you make me move it, but for a short period of time.
Thank you. And just one last question. This pertains to Councilor Drapkin's testimony from last week. Do you think that some kind of program along the lines of what she's talking about, if it scaled up to, you know, 10 scattered around the city or something, I'm just kind of throwing out these numbers, would that increase or decrease the workload on the police, or would it be no difference really in terms of the workload on police staff and code enforcement?
Yeah, thanks, Councilor Peralta. I was not at the last council session, but I've been at numerous meetings. In fact, I'm on that, that subcommittee about vehicular homelessness. And I will say that under Councilor Drapkin's model and the model that spring, Eugene, I guess, is, it's a private partnership with the government in that the private entities are monitoring and managing those sites. And I do, I don't know, I do see that that issue, I don't think they run, they're not, they're kind of parallel. I mean, I don't think you need to solve one before the other. I do think that that's a long-term solution that Councilor Drapkin is working on, but that being said, I do think that a program like that does assist those that have this, they're, they have an inability to get housing for whatever reason because of, they, you know, they're just trying to get back on their feet. I think that's where that program really, in Eugene-Springfield area, is really helpful, is that they're trying to help those, they're trying to plug them into some resources to get them back on their feet in, 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 in permanent type of housing.
Yeah, kind of a transitional process of 90 days to get you on your feet is what I understand.
You're correct, Mayor Hill. Thank you.
Adam, any, any questions? Oh, go ahead, Kelly.
Just as a comment on the information that you presented last meeting, I was quite impressed with the work she's done, but you have to keep in mind that Eugene has been working on this process for 20-some years, and they're quite far along the way. We are just in the fledgling stage, we don't even have a location yet. So to tie this with what we're doing tonight really, you know, I think there's a possibility there for the future, but I don't see that that is really something that would tie into what we're doing with tonight.
And I would agree with Counselor President Manke that, that we, we've got two things in front of us. We've got ordinance that we need to talk about tonight, and, you know, I, I appreciate the report talking about the humanitarian impact and that, you know, we need to take these moving parts into consideration, but some of that can be in the timing of how we go about in enforcing that then, and, and, and the educational process. So, Adam, any questions for...
I guess my main question would be, in the matrix that you guys presented and the consequences, some of the jurisdictions do state they have an abandoned vehicle procedure or they boot a vehicle or something like that, but the presentation talks about voluntary compliance, so have they just not had to result to an abandoned vehicle process or...
Correct.
Okay.
Specific to RVs and campers. Now, if they have abandoned vehicles, then they address those as abandoned vehicles, but not as the RV camper.
Okay.
Does that make sense as far as the, the difference between the two?
Yeah, occupied vehicle versus unoccupied vehicle.
Essentially.
Is our abandoned vehicle ordinance, is it tight right now or it's pretty loose, right?
It's, it's loose. There's, there's a lot of loopholes in it. There's a lot of time that has to expire before we can do any enforcement action. And if a person was to move their vehicle 300 feet in that timeframe, it starts the clock all over again.
So in this ordinance for RVs and campers, we can also put in an update to abandoned vehicles?
Correct.
I think so.
So in your professional opinion, if we put in, if you don't have current tags or insurance, your vehicle is technically abandoned if it's on a city's public street?
Correct.
Yes.
I'd be in favor of something like that. It's pretty cut and dry. It makes it easy for your officers. You run the plate, they have insurance, they have current tags or they don't. As far as the RV and camping goes, I think there does need to be a nominal, you know, punitive fee attached to it, even if citations do stack up on a windshield. I don't think $15 a day like Oregon City has is going to really have an effect on anybody. You know, I, I also don't think that $500 or $2,500 a day is realistic either, so...
I think there has to be a happy medium there somewhere.
Yeah.
Something that's going to be effective, but not too punitive.
I think $100 a day catches somebody's attention. And then as far as timing goes, I would be in favor of something like Oregon City's or, or Gresham's, you know, it's, we know they're out of compliance with the ordinance, so why delay it? Get the clock running at 24 hours.
Thank you, Adam. The one question I have is, you know, we've seen what seems to be a growing increase of, of, of RVs on our street. Five years ago, I, they may have been here, but it wasn't as visible and, and thus, you know, out of, out of sight, out of mind, kind of, but over the last six months, we've just seen this increase. As we've done the code enforcement that we are able to do, even though it's very hard, have we, have we gotten a sense of what has driven more individuals to our community in talking to individuals? That would be a question I would ask. I don't know if you have an answer, but it would help, I think, me understand, you know, are other jurisdictions putting requirements on and they're going to other communities that don't have the same restrictions? I just, I ask that question.
It's the services that are provided in Yarmouth County and McMinnville specifically.
Okay. They're driving...
They, they draw people in.
Okay. Good. Well, let's have a discussion among ourselves, and Alan?
One more question.
Okay, sure.
Captain or chief? Captain?
I was a captain.
You were.
You were. I get mixed up sometimes, still.
On the, those who are not voluntary complying, if you were to approach them with a question or a recommendation that they look at an RV park outside of town...
Ah, I figured it out.
Start pushing buttons.
Just push buttons. Yeah, sorry.
No problem. I'm just curious, what would be the typical response? Like, it's too far away, it's inconvenient, it costs too much money, it's a free country, and I'm within my rights. What would be a typical...
I think you're hitting them all.
A, B, C, D, and F. So would there be anybody that would comply voluntarily?
Well, I'm sure that there would be people who would voluntarily comply.
Such as...
I, I don't have the ability right now to be able to pull the specific numbers to say that, you know, 15% would not, or 85% would. My hope would be that 100% would voluntarily comply, but that, to be realistic, you know, that's not going to happen, so...
Right.
But I don't know what would be a good number to put on that as far as the people who decided, for whatever reason, to not voluntarily comply.
I know it varies, like you got these two groups that we're showing up on the screen. Would the chances that them voluntarily complying be greater than those elsewhere in the city, or less?
I think it depends on the reason that you're, you find yourself in this situation. If it's a choice, if you made the choice to be there, the reason for voluntarily complying is probably not going to be as great, versus if you just happen to find yourself in this position because of things that are out of your control.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Alan. Wendy?
Yeah. I still, a little unclear about, so if we have, if we did enact an ordinance, some of these ordinances have citation, and then a tow. Some of them are just citations. If you are in a situation where you're just putting more and more citations on a car, what's the end? Like, when does, what happens?
Well, I think that's a decision that we have to come to, as far as the city is concerned, is what we are willing to do.
Right.
If there isn't voluntary compliance, if there isn't compliance after citations. What, what's the next step?
And these communities don't have that next step?
They just haven't had to take that next step, or they haven't enumerated...